I know. Yes.
Hey, Rob.
Well, the good thing is, is Rob and Christie are here. So I just told Rob to take good notes.
This is the Laurel City Council's work session. This is Wednesday, October the 5th, 7:00 PM. Item number one on our work session agenda is a draft ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel amending the code of the city of Laurel. Chapter seven, garbage, trash, weeds, et cetera. Article two, refuge collection disposable service by and repealing and reenacting with amendment section seven dash twenty-three supplemental collections prohibited materials. To clarify that the property owners are responsible for the supplemental residential collection services provided to the property that they own. Mr. Free.
Yes, um, what we've done is cleaned this up a little bit and add a line in here that basically reads unpaid fees for a rental property are the responsibility of the property owner and/or property management company. There were some issues with-
Can you get a little bit closer to that mic, please?
There was some issues with collections when a renter called for a special pickup and we would have collected and unbeknownst to us, they moved out. So when he tried to collect from them, of course, they're gone. So we were trying to clean this up where it makes the property owner and/or property management responsible for those bills.
Okay. Questions from the council? Mr. Smalls.
Rob, how does notification, is notification made to the property owners in situations like you just described?
Uh, yes, we contact them once we find out that their renter has vacated the property and is no longer there.
Okay, um, is this effort similar to what we've experienced with residential properties? When the owner or tenant has moved out of a residential property? We've in some cases had some difficulty in finding out who the actual property owner is?
Uh, yes, but in those instances, I believe that there can be a lien put against the property.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Rob.
Ms. Nicholas.
Thank you. So could there be some sort of special arrangement, like with a property management company?
We presently do that on the ones that we know of. It's sometimes we're unaware that these were, you know, rental, had rental, or had companies that were taking care of the properties.
Okay, so basically what has happened is an apartment complex, a person who lives in an apartment complex will call you, no?
Well, if it's three units or less.
Oh, okay. So then the fees fall on the property owner?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand. Thank you.
Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. These rental units, all residential rental units need to be inspected, correct?
As far as I know, yes.
And they're on a rotating basis every so many. Okay, so my suggestion is, do we notify the property owner? We're going to inspect the properties for that situation? How do they, how do we notify the property owner that, hey, it's your time, we're going to inspect your rental property now?
Um, Mr. Lewis, we were, we were working with the Fire Marshal Permit Services who issues the rental licenses to get notification on both the renewal notices as well as the actual licenses so that when people sign up for the program to rent their house, they'll know that ultimately the property owner is responsible.
Yeah, I just, I'm just worried about not notify, not letting the property owner know in advance that they're liable for this charge. So some way you've got to let them know, and maybe it's, how often do they pay for the rental license? Every year?
They pay every year, so we were putting-
Okay, so that's where it would be.
Notification on the renewal notices.
All right, because I think that's important.
Absolutely.
So they don't, you know, they come, don't come in here to the mayor's office, I didn't know about this. Not going to come see you and I, Michelle, they're going to come see the mayor. But again, I think it's important that we let them know somehow, at some point in time, that, hey, this is the new law of the land. And if your tenant calls, we'll pick it up, but don't forget, you're responsible. That way, they can put it in their lease agreement. I see our attorney saying yes. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Crere.
I, I think what you stated is my question too about the rentals, but the problem occurs when we don't have somebody that's registered to rent a property.
That's correct.
So we can't give them notice, but that's the price you pay, so that's all I have.
They have other problems if we find out, right?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Free. This will be on our agenda for the meeting of the mayor and city council on Wednesday, October the 12th at 7:00 PM. Item number two, an ordinance number eighteen sixty-nine, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, amending the code of the city of Laurel, chapter nine, miscellaneous provisions of offenses and for section nine dash twenty grocery cart storage, amend the title and allow the mayor to establish policies with respect to cart retrieval, hauling, and disposal fee schedule. Mr. Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. President. You should have before you the draft ordinance for the shopping cart issue. As you are well aware, this is passed through many hands. I must apologize for the format that you received this evening. The changes are not underlined. Somewhere in the process, somebody accepted the changes and the document was formatted as it should appear at Monday night's council meeting. So if, if the council desires, we can pull up a document and, and show the changes for Monday night's meeting, or we can leave it stand as it is.
I think from the public's perspective, I mean, I know it, obviously, but I think for the public's perspective for Monday, if we can have it done that way, it would be very much appreciated. Ms. Ral?
Okay. We'll, we'll take care of that.
Thank you, sir.
Beyond that, sir, the, um, the proposed ordinance is our understanding of all the conversations that have taken place over a couple of months in the production of this document. And as you should have on your copy is the proposed policy that would be enacted by the mayor. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to address them.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, you want to comment at all?
No, I think Mr. Fleming kind of answered it all. As you're well aware, we went round and round, back and forth with several different versions. We listened to testimony from Giant Food in particular, and we tried to incorporate all those. And what we really ended up doing was starting backwards and working from there. We wrote the policy first and then came up with the legislation. And we think it meets all your requirements and your needs, but we're here to listen and if there's something that we need to adjust, we'll do that.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Ms. Nicholas?
No questions.
Mr. Lewis?
I'm fine.
Ms. Crere?
I'm fine.
Mr. Smalls?
Tito.
Thank you. It will be on our meeting agenda for the Wednesday, the 12th. Thank you, Mr. Fleming.
Thank you, sir.
We may want to, or at least do the council, I know that councils talk to, I think, a couple of different store managers. You may want to write a letter or make sure they're aware of it's back going.
I'll get together with this, Ral, we'll do something. Thank you. Tim, would you make a note, please? Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number three, economic development program. Mr. Brock.
Yes, Mr. President. Before you is a proposed ordinance that would expand the Laurel Economic Development Program. If you recall, currently it's effective on Main Street. What this would do would expand the use to revitalization overlay area one, two, and three, which is essentially from US one, from the county line south to Conter, I mean, Conti Road. And like the Main Street, the following incentives would be available. Reduced building permit fees for revitalization and new construction, assistance through the permitting process, real estate property tax credit upon recommendation by the mayor and the mayor and city council may determine that a proposed economic development project or revitalization project is of a size and nature as to provide substantial economic benefit to the city and citizens in business property tax credits. That's essentially the ordinance that is before you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Brock, for that information you provided me the other day on the three parking spaces.
Yes, sir.
Reassuring. Okay, Mr. Smalls, you have some questions? Do you need a minute?
Uh, I don't have any questions, Mr. President. I am just, just pleased to see the expansion of the economic development program. I know it's taken some time to sort of get, you know, all of the pieces put together, but I think there's an excellent move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Crere.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's great, too, and I'm glad we're expanding it. One of the questions I have was on page three, Mr. Road Clubs.
You said three, is that correct?
Yep, top of page three.
Oh, that's if we join with Prince George's County in their incentives, which would include a road club. It's where you, the property owners would contribute X amount of dollars to do road improvements.
I was thinking of AAA, thank you.
No, no.
We've done this in the past, Conti Road here in particular.
Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, let me just, I'm fine with this. Let me just, the map that you gave us?
Yes, sir.
Is that all correct? Has that all been verified? How about the Hispanic-style house behind the church? That's in the revitalization area?
I would have to-
On the corner of Fifth and Prince George Street.
I'd have to confirm that.
Yeah, I think, I seem to get these houses that keep sticking out into where they shouldn't be. That's a house there, that's a residence.
Yes, sir.
I know it's owned by the church, but it's still a residence. I'll ask that you check that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Nicholas.
I'd just like to say it's a good program, and I'm glad to see the expansion.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could, before Mr. Brock, please. Mr. Brock, going back to the, to the map, is it possible, I mean, eyes like mine, I can't tell, you know, what's up and what's down, could we possibly get this in a PDF or something that we could-
Yes, sir.
Bring up on our tablets or computers?
I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from anybody? Thank you, Mr. Brock.
Yeah, we, we do have something. Yeah, this one, too.
Mr. President, the, the amount of the funding that was left in order for you to determine the amount of funding you wanted to dedicate to that for the current year.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else from anybody? Thank you, Mr. Brock. All right, moving on to item number four.
We need to, we need to decide. I think one of the things that we talked about last time was left it blank. I wanted Michelle to, Ms. Sarah, to go in and look at the numbers and make a recommendation to you. I met with Michelle earlier today, so, Jack, unless you've talked to Michelle, Michelle wants to-
No, sir, not yet.
Let me, let me also say that this is a little bit different from the Main Street itself. This is something new that we have worked on for the overlay zones. We're probably going to come back later on with the expansion of some of the programs that are on Main Street up Route One, as well as a program to help some of the smaller mom-and-papas, we'll say, businesses. So we'll be coming back to you all with that as well. But, so, if you want to kind of just let them know what you did number-wise and how we got to that number.
In looking at the preliminary figures-
Can you get on the microphone, please?
She is, she's just not standing.
Looking at the preliminary numbers from the FY16 budget and what funds would be available, I'm comfortable with recommending $250,000.
Which would require council action to move that, move that money, correct, Michelle?
Yes, sir.
So we'd have to, it's going to be a two-part piece of this.
So it's just within the financial end of it?
You're, you're going to put the policy in place with the ordinance, and then you'll fund a piece of it through the program.
Mr. Lewis.
So just, if I could, Mayor, if you just, we're going to move the 250 from where into this pot. Michelle?
It would be from the unassigned fund balance, undesignated reserves-
Undesignated reserves.
The way it's read now, into the FY17 operating budget, because the assumption is-
What specific line item for this?
Yes, it would be a credit against the real estate tax revenue.
Okay, so it'll be handled the same way as the historic district credit?
Yes. In your footnote of the budget, there's a deduction of, of the possible aggregate of $30,000 for HDC credits.
It also gives you opportunity, council each year, to take a look at it-
Right, I understand.
How far you want to go and, you know, adjust.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, I'm fine, Mr. President.
Anything else from council? Mr. Smalls.
Michelle, for the current program, how much is budgeted for Main Street in, in our current budget?
In the current budget, there's a $50,000 credit against real estate tax for economic development in general terms. So that is something that we've applied, the tax credit that was awarded to Olive on Main last year and other commercial property improvements. The Main Street relocation grant funds are in the, are managed by, not managed by, but had been set aside previously through actions such as this, when the Main Street relocation grant and the sign grant were created. So those are separate funds.
And how much is that total?
Started with $300,000, I believe, after the applications that have been awarded. We are at about $165,000 remaining.
And in the unassigned, the unassigned fund balance, I know we talked about this a few work sessions ago, can you just give me a ballpark of what that number is?
Well, the current balance from the FY15 audit, because it only gets adjusted once a year, was $10,464,000. And in concluding the FY16 and estimating funds that were either savings or excess revenues, ordinance eighteen eighty-one that was enacted at the last meeting took some of those balances. We added to certain reserves, we created the health insurance, the employee health insurance reserve and those funds without what we felt or what I recommended that was not actually tapping into the $10,464, because by charter, we are required to keep 10% of the operating. And practices, and accounting practices recommend we have at least three months of expenditures in reserve.
And arriving at the 250K that's, that's proposed here or suggested, how do you anticipate, because I presume to get to that 250 number, you would think about what possible participation may be in the program, right? Do you expect it to be sort of at the same pace as Main Street, you know, more applicants? Mayor?
In particular, if you read, like on page one, really where we tried to focus in, these were several of the bigger stores that we've just seen either move, close their doors. So that's kind of where we're really focusing in on, because as you read, we can do a tax credit, we can also do a credit through personal property, we can do permit fees, those things that we can help try to, what we believe draw business to some of the centers, the town center, the shopping center along the corridor that you see that we've highlighted. And I'd like to say it's similar to what we're doing on Main Street, but if you're looking at Main Street, there's a lot of other programs that are already for established businesses that are there. This is really to bring in some new business and to, you know, really try to work with either a broker or a management company that owns the property that's trying to fill the store, those types of things. Jack, unless I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's kind of where we're, we're attempting to do. I mean, what I'd asked Jack to do was to come up with a way, a plan to say, we're not sitting back, we're looking at some stores, and we've already got a couple of things we think maybe, or we're hearing some things that may be happening. So you got anything further on?
No, sir, you're correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not being negative at all. I'm just trying to, for example, any data on these kinds of programs attracting national chains, given what your, what your, what the mayor just described?
Probably let kind of Jack speak to that. I think we're treading on some new water.
Well, we are, we are looking at some national chains such as Starbucks, Odell, Dick's, to attract those types of businesses to the city.
Okay, and this, this kind of program could be in part an incentive, perhaps?
Shut me on.
Yes, sir.
And it, I mean, I think it's fair to say, and as we discussed, we used, I said to Michelle that I wanted to use the 250 number. We think there's some other funding that may be available as well to go higher, but I want to try to take some small steps here. Part of the issue with this is, on the tax credits in particular, it's really going to go to the property owner. So bringing in a chain store may not help, so we may have to shift and go in other directions, which are new to us, and we just wanted to, which is why I didn't want to use all of the funding that we thought we've identified to create at least 250 to put the word out there to some of these brokers and to some of those that Jack deals with on a daily basis, to see if there is interest in whether that helps.
And my, my last question to this would be getting the word out, how do we, if at all, we market this, this program so that we are reaching out to the target businesses?
Well, we start, we hired a person that's going to do marketing for us. They started Monday, and that'll be part of their job is to market the city of Laurel.
Excellent, okay. I think it's also fair to say, Jack's been on the phone quite a bit, made calls, cold calls himself. I've talked to a few individuals, so we're doing things like that as well. And as you're well aware, the word of mouth is kind of the best advertiser.
But I think it's also fair to say that, that it may, this type of thing may also encourage somebody to come in and think about buying a piece of property and then using that so that they benefit from every aspect of it.
Totally agree.
Anything else from council? Mr. Lewis?
I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Thank you, Mayor. Item number four, this is a draft ordinance to amend the snow emergency routes. Mr. Free.
Yes, with the city acquiring the old Sandy Spring Road from West Street all the way to the, the end by 95, we've taken over Brooklyn Bridge Road from Patuxent all the way to the 95 overpass and Haynes Road. Presently, of course, the city get around has always plowed these streets, but they were never dedicated streets in the city, so we're trying to get them so we can mark them as snow emergency routes and be properly taken care of during these types of storms.
Okay. Sure, Mayor, go ahead. Mr. Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. President. As with the, the parking ordinance, or, excuse me, the stop sign ordinances that we gave the Director of Public Works authority over, we are, are preparing recommendations for the Director of Public Works to have authority over designation of snow routes as well if there are no problems.
Couldn't agree more. Mayor?
I just want to say, I think there's a couple of things that we did when we had the big snow last time, and I want us to address that as well, to give that authority to the Public Works Director with notification to the councils, we've done in the past. So looking at some things where, when we get a heavy snow of Rob or whoever Public Works Director would be, to be able to have that authority to go in and say, this side of the street we're closing down, you can't park on it because of snow plows and those types of things. And we just thought today, after, you know, reading this, that we should bring that to the council's attention and really have some discussion on it. We think the expertise is there within Public Works or whoever the Public Works Director is in years to come to give them that authority, make it easier and cleaner and save a money.
I thought we did that before. I'm surprised we didn't. I know we gave him some other additional authority, but-
Stop signs.
Stop signs and that sort of thing, but I, I couldn't agree more. I'm sure the council would concur as well. Do we have any questions from council on this issue of the snow route?
Mr. President, let me just, the one part that's maybe, we need to make sure we get the word out there is the piece down to 95 on Brooklyn Bridge Road, because people park on that street when the snows come. And they're going to be surprised when they find out they can't park there anymore. And I'm sure that we'll do a good job of that, but I think that's important, because now you're going to put the signs up, correct?
Yes.
And more than that, I think there may be, you know, put a flyer on the door just to let them know, especially on that one section there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Free. Mr. Fleming, appreciate the information. Anything else, Mayor? Number five on our agenda this evening is a consideration of a bid recommendation for the purchase of one marked police K-9 SUV and one unmarked police car. Mr. Free.
Yes, as you just read, this department has recommended a purchase of these two vehicles. We had solicited through several agencies- Um, we had, uh, solicited, uh, uh, through several agencies to see if there was any contracts that were out there, um, to fulfill these. And Hertrich, uh, Fleet Services, uh, has the state of Maryland contract for, uh, the one Ford Explorer and one, uh, Ford Police Interceptor sedan. Um, funds are provided for through the CIP two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty-two, um, uh, vehicle replacement funded with, uh, speed camera funds. The, uh, unmarked sedan runs twenty-eight, nine thirty-two, and this comes with most of all the accessories, lighting package and everything else already on it. And the Ford Explorer is thirty-three, six oh five with basically all the lighting package, too. Um, the total cost for the two would be sixty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Okay, so I understand that this is the end of the season for these, it'll be sixteens? Are we getting any kind of a price break because it's the end of the season?
What they've done is they honored the sixteen prices and these will be seventeens.
Okay. Questions from the council? Mr. Smalls? Ms. Nicholas?
No questions.
Mr. Lewis?
I'm fine.
Ms. Crery?
I'm fine.
This will be on our agenda for Wednesday, October the twelfth at seven P.M. here in council chambers. Is there anything else to come before the work session? Seeing none, we are adjourned.